That's funny. I would never have thought of that.
Me either. Because my sound is usually not on anyways.
Yeah, I always reach over even though I leave them on vibrate all the time. I always double check.
So what was your family name?
Stainer? I think it was just a package delivered from my right. He's looking at me like, what is that?
Yeah, it's challenging enough, even if you have.
It is five o'clock.
My sister, we've had our.
I will call the meeting to order and we will do the pledge later. So Mr. Seal.
God, we are.
Job is yours.
We were so ready, weren't we?
Please ignore the number of slides. I can get through it in that time, I swear.
We measure you on slides.
Good. Sixty-nine slides, awesome. Okay, all right, so this is a presentation very similar with a few modifications that I made to the Chamber of Commerce luncheon last month. Council President Wilhelm asked me to provide it here so that we can not only inform you guys of the stuff that's been going on in town, but also the rest of the citizens should they decide to watch this. It'll be posted on YouTube afterwards. So with the, I'm gonna try and move my face someplace else. Oh, she's awesome. All right. So a quick look. We are looking at historic population growth. We have been growing. Everybody notices it. We're growing now. We've been growing for many years. Button doesn't work. Okay, so.
Too many slides.
All right, let's try this. Oh, there we go. All right, so. It's not too many slides. It'll be good. The city limits. Just wanted to kind of show you where we were at and where we've come to now. So in 1980, you can see the historic downtown began to grow. In 1990, we continued to annex and 2000, you saw moving out towards state line. Come to 2010, we started going north further. 2020, in the last 10 years, we've annexed in the areas that are primarily highlighted within the circle. So you can see that we have grown absolutely. That had to happen. It's just as natural for typical growth. However, we do have comprehensive plans. We do look at that growth. We do plan for that growth. This was a comprehensive plan that we passed last year. Within the future land use map, you can see the city boundaries as they are today or when this was exactly, or when this was actually adopted. Outside the city limits are various areas that have been designated under the future land use map as transitional or commercial or business industrial and commercial and things along those lines. This is the ACI boundary that is exclusive tiers to the city. This is a little bit of piece of information that I did not have in the Chamber of Commerce meeting. This is kind of a question that had come up afterwards is how many acres of land are within the exclusive tier of the ACI that, you know, and what are they technically planned for? So we looked at the exclusive tier and exclusive tier is the yellow. And this was a map provided by Cootney County. I believe my staff did manage to update it to today's number, to today's stuff because it was a little outdated. But outside the tiers, outside the city limit within the exclusive tiers, there still remain area, you know, three, 3,391 acres that are designated as transitional. I'm gonna pop back really quick to here. So the transitional is the light blue. Now, the light blue that you see here is not strictly within that exclusive tier. That does include areas of the shared tier. That's why I showed this map that has just the, just our exclusive. Residentially, residential planned areas of 885, commercial mixed around 512, business industrial at 315, commercial at 224 and medium density at 110 acres. Now of those, you can see on the right-hand side that it also designate which acres currently get the $100,000 exemption. So that basically indicates that there's a house on it and its owner occupied right now. So it just kind of gives you an idea as to maybe how those lands are currently being used. And I'll just show you that map again really quick to kind of remind you. So the pink is the transition, is the business, commercial. Transitional is that light blue. The residential that it was referring to is more the low-density residential. And the business industrial is the gray. So I just kind of wanted to give you that overview there. Also, we have areas that are inside the city limits that are unplatted acreages. So these are ones that are inside the city that are, have already been annexed, have already been zoned, but are currently not platted yet. So that would be things like, this is very better. Let me see if I can use this. Does this show up? Yes, it does. So kind of like North Place East here, this area up here is all unplatted, but it is in the city and it is zoned. Same with this area of Foxtail. It is in the city and zoned and unplatted. And then some areas of Montrose as well. So that kind of gives you an idea as to kind of how many acres of unplatted land is within the city limits and is zoned, but it's just, so it's not quite ready to develop. But it does have future plans to be developed. We also have land outside the city limits that is currently looking at, for a public reserve area. This is the land application sites. 645 acres are owned by the city of Post Falls. That's the darker green. And 314 acres are owned by the city of Rathrum, which has been designated as well for future land application sites. So this is kind of a green, potentially could fall within that green belt area where this land will be, could be and planned to be reserved for the future. Undeveloped will be used for land application purposes and then it would grow crops like grass or alfalfa. At this time, they look for high, highly water-dependent type of crops so that it will suck up as much of that water that we apply to it as possible. Now, back to the regular report that I had done. So just kind of wanted to give you an idea again as to the number of housing units that are being constructed within the city each year. So just looking back over the last five years, we've added enough housing units to support approximately 11,670 people. That's in five years. The city of Rathrum itself is only 8,200 approximately. So last year alone, we're looking at probably a growth around 3,400 people based on the average household size and the number of dwelling units that we had constructed. Again, this was following the growth trends that we seem to be pretty much on track with where what KMPO was looking at when they applied a 4.8% growth statistic for the future for Post Falls. While right now it is slightly higher than the last number of years, it's just kind of gonna offset and just kind of potentially stick to that 4.8%. We may see a dip, absolutely. And when you're, when you're only able to add, say, 3,400 people a year, that percentage does drop. So while last year was around 9%, you know, in five years from now, those same number of 30, same 3,400 people is not going to be 9%. It's gonna be, begin to become substantially lower. We can look at where growth is occurring within the city. And right now, we anticipate growth, you know, along the Highway 41 corridor, up near Tulamore, North Place East, Montrose, out near the Jaclyn Expo area, which is where we're seeing housing and further development. Potential areas for the future, we do, we are likely to see development begin to happen over in the former Armstrong property, potentially see some up near the Pleasant View corridor, see some further along McGuire as we begin to see more and more of those five to 10-acre tracts come in and requesting to develop. But why is this important? We do have, we do have a high number of vacancy rates, or sorry, a very low vacancy rate. No matter what we do, it just continues to stay low. This, this number is a year or so old at this point, but from anecdotally and looking at the area rental rates and things along those lines in the multifamily, it still sticks. I believe it's even below 1% was the last thing that we had heard talking to a larger company. Again, showing that newly permitted dwelling units are on the rise. Below the, you know, so we've got the total numbers for the last four years, 593, 828, 1139, 111363. And below that, it notes the single-family residences that were constructed. So the remain, between the, between the, making that difference is your multifamily or the apartments are making up the difference of the construction. We don't have a lot of duplexes or townhomes currently being constructed. We haven't had that missing middle type of construction that we'd like to see begin. But we have made strides in trying to create new zones in order to encourage that. You guys heard a piece, I believe, last week or the week before on the changes to the R2 zone. That may help, help with that, find that place for the missing middle. Newly permitted dwelling units, just kind of give you a look at where we are at in comparison to previous years. This year, we are slightly down from last year, but we have caught back up tremendously since I actually gave this presentation three weeks ago and that number for, through February was only 34 units. So in, since the end of February and the end of March, we jumped 234 units. Value of construction by year. Again, last year, we saw a higher value of construction than the year before. This year, we are again relatively on pace for this time of year, but again, slightly behind. But you saw that the dwelling unit numbers were lower comparatively speaking anyways. So I don't think that we're going to have a drop-off. I don't think that we're going to be behind last year when it comes to the end of the year, but this is where we're at right now, just a snapshot. Kind of showing you the fact that when we do take in development, when we do permit new housing units and commercial development, we do collect annexation and impact fees and these go to help offset that cost of growth. This is part of that growth pays for growth theory that we follow here in Post Falls. I wanted to give you kind of a sample of the construction and development that happened in 2020 and some of the stuff that we're seeing happening in 2021 as well. Some of this is under construction. Some of this has been completed. So looking at a couple of examples for industrial and manufacturing development, these are over on the west side of town, over by Innovation Way and Creative Way, that type of area. You know, and this is, again, I'm just gonna kind of go through these and you can see some examples of some of the industrial or manufacturing type buildings that have been going up this year. Flipping Storage is, is working on it. They've got a rather large site with a number of buildings on it. Those Drywall, Romney Motion. And we've got these three that are over again in that same general area. The second KWI, they had another one, the previous one. This is the Point at Post Falls. I believe this is a multi-tenant piece, more of a spec building. Most of the stuff that we see that gets built when it comes to industrial and manufacturing type of stuff is intended for like an owner-occupied type of structure. UPS opened this year and pretty much within a couple of weeks of opening, they came in and said, hey, it's too small. Can we keep our other facility over at the Greyhound for a while longer until we figure out what to do? Too small being that, not that they didn't plan it big enough, it's just that the business continues to be increasing, especially due to COVID. They saw an increase and it's not, doesn't mean that it's gonna drop off anytime soon. You can see here a couple of aerial shots. The one on the left is that Point building that I showed before, the spec building. And the one on the right is the UPS facility. We had some commercial and retail development this year and I'm gonna show you some examples of some tenant fit-outs. You can kind of see this one, these three places on Seltice turned over this year. You can see the difference between 2019 and 2020. So you're seeing owners and developers and business owners begin to put money into some of these older, older structures that, you know, begin to show their age, but they can, they continue to be valid and useful and, you know, trying to get some nice turnover as opposed to leaving sites vacant, which is wonderful to see these happen. The laundry mat is currently under construction when I went and took that photo. I'm not sure where they're at in the process. That was the former Payless Shoes when it closed. India House was a new one as well. Additional commercial and retail development, kind of looking over after the Highway 41 area and Mullen and Quad Park area. So Quad Park continues to develop out. The one on, in the very far left of that was a building that did get a CO in 2020. And the one on the right is again currently under construction and they've got plans to build more. And that same developer is looking to do additional development within Post Falls, kind of similar to what you see in here. Multi-tenant buildings that are meant for either retail or services or even industrial and commercial type of small spaces. And then of course Hardwicks, nicely finished, still waiting for them to open the doors, but they're doing what they're doing. I don't have a timeframe on that. One of the developments that we are anticipating seeing begin this year is Giant Storage, which is occupying approximately 10.2 acres on the Highway 41 corridor between Horse Haven and Pole Line. Treaty Rock Elementary opened up this year over by Foxtail. We also had a number of subdivisions that came through. Over here off of McGuire, we have the Gabrielle and Wildflower subdivisions. So you can see the one on the bottom is, has been platted. It has lots that have been, the streets, the street has been put in and the public improvements have put in. In the picture on the right, you can see that some of the houses have begun to be built. These are, this is one of, this is an example of those smaller five-acre properties beginning to develop out with their own individual, with multiple lots and filling them in with single-family houses in this situation. These lots are approximately 7,000 square feet. The houses that they're putting out there, I believe, run around $750,000. And this is directly across the street from multifamily development and Montrose as you move further in. The two five-acre parcels just to the north of it that are not platted, that's the Wildflower subdivision. That one received an R2 zoning and they will be coming in soon. If they haven't, I believe that actually Wildflower may have been on a recent consent agenda for their CIA. CIA, anyways, construction improvement agreement, yeah. So we'll be seeing dirt moving out there probably relatively soon this year. Poderia and Green Meadows. Get some nice aerial shots here. You can see the roads have been, have been put in and the lots have been platted. The areas that are shown that are not platted is going to be, they are, part of it is residential, part of it is commercially zoned. This is all butts up against Prairie Avenue. And those are two different developments that are occurring at the same time up there, but you can see that the developments work with the city to have street configurations so that they can loop together and we can have a good, good network of streets. Tranquil Meadows and Quiet Ridge. These are also 15, this is also 15 acres of land over by Prairie and Chase. These ones, I believe, were single-family developments and you can see from the aerials that while the roads have been put in, currently you've just got a T for one of them because there's still a five-acre parcel in the middle that will eventually come in and will be able to get the connection between the subdivisions to connect those streets and see that circulation that we hope to, hope to be able to have in that area. Foxtail subdivision continues to grow, continues to plat, slowly but surely, they will begin to move northward and look at that transitional area between where they're at now and as they come up towards Prairie. Woodbridge South, this is over near the UPS facility. This was, I believe, 182 lots. You can see I-90 in the back of the photo. And I believe the 182 lots were sold and developed within approximately less than 18 months. Over the course of the last year, we have seen a number of apartment complexes, small and large, come in, get approved, begin construction or finish construction. So I've got eight different ones on here. I just kind of wanted to show the examples as to where they're located and then show pictures of a handful of them. You've got the Parkside Apartments. These ones are over by Tulamore. The pictures on the left kind of indicate some of the amenities that they've provided. So you've got a dog park on the bottom picture on the left and what appears to be along the lines of like a boche pit for entertainment on the upper left. And because it's adjacent to Tulamore Park, they've got a wonderful playground nearby that the kids are able to easily walk to and enjoy. Spencer Place Apartments is over near Third, between Spencer and Potlatch. This is over by the plumber mill. It is currently under construction and you can see from a couple of the photos here that their type of amenities include, I believe that's a pool. I know that they also have a couple of dog park areas, dog washing stations, outdoor barbecuing areas, things along those lines that helps to increase the livability of apartments such as these. River Falls Apartment, this is under construction currently over on Railroad, just about a block or so from here. They, I'm not sure what their timeline is, but currently they have one structure that has begun to go vertical. Most of the foundations are in and ready to go. This is one of the first ones that developed, is a larger development. It's 54 units. It's within the downtown, so it's using the smart code. So this development is actually up pretty close to the sidewalks. You get that urban, more urban feel. You get the connection to the pedestrian activity. You get that feeling that you're connected to the street as it goes. You know, and the pedestrians on the street are, it's a very walkable type of development, much more urban. So the parking is hidden behind and, you know, that's where, so that you're not staring at a parking lot with an apartment in back, you get to see the beautiful apartments with the parking hidden behind. Belciello also went up. They had a couple of different parcels over there. I think that each one was approximately 80 units, so approximately 160 units went up over off of, this is over off of Highway 41 area. A couple of the smaller complexes that we've seen come in. These are, I can't remember. I think there's our 12-unit complexes. These are over on Second near Warren Field. The first one on the right has been completed and occupied for closer, close to a year now. And the one on the left is very similar to it, almost identical it looks like. And that's been under construction for the last number of months. The Remington Apartments are on the left. That's 132 units. This is out by Beck and, and the Woodbridge subdivision. Kind of again applying and utilizing it as, since it's a larger development, a kind of creates a buffer between the higher-traffic Beck and the subdivision to the east of there. The one on the right is 420 East Fourth Avenue. This was the 18-unit complex that went in on a small corner parcel. This is also the one that helped the city realize that there was a, what you can only refer to as an unintended consequence within our zoning regulations regarding on-street parking being applied to residential developments. So because of this development, there isn't very much onsite parking. They have a, they will have a number of parking spaces on the street, but because of the way the code had been written, they were able to count every single parking space on the street towards their development. So they did not, they were not required to put very much parking onsite. So we changed that code. We also changed some residential design standards, multifamily design standards that increased open space requirements when you're developing apartments of this, of this nature and of this size. So this is kind of one of those outliers that, you know, it'll be 18 units on the smaller parcel, but technically, under this configuration, would not be able to be developed again at this time. We also increased the parking requirements at that time as well for that SC5 zone. Other ideas about things that are coming in 2020, 2021, excuse me, that we see and anticipate, primarily looking at the Idaho veneer site. The picture on the lower left is a conceptual design of how the developer looks to redevelop the old mill site. Within that, they are going to be trying to save a couple of the older buildings, reskin them, reuse them, repurpose them so that we can have kind of that tieback to the old, old mill city that we were. And they're going to attempt to also save the tower-type structure. I'm not 100% sure what it's called.
Silo.
Silo. It's a silo, simply enough. It is silo. They're gonna try and save the silo. Again, make it as almost like a landmark and a throwback to the mill days of the city. I believe that the, the development also has the name Mill in it. I think it is just called The Mill possibly, but that's what they're looking at branding towards. We do anticipate hopefully seeing some development happen on the landings this year. Let me see what I've got. Oh, here, I'll give you a couple of better pictures. Look at that. It's been a while since I've done this. So, okay, so here's a closer look at the mill site. So the building there that you see in the front, they are looking to repurpose that one, reskin it, utilize the, some of the existing structure with inside it. They like the shape. They like the style. It's, it is right up near the right-of-way, so when, as the sidewalks get installed, you will be right next to this building, being able to walk by, see what's going on. I think that they've got a great vision for it. And you can see the silo there to the right as well. The landings. So again, the construction of a Vista Park continues to move along. I'm sure that we'll hear an update on where they're at someday with, from Dave, but it is moving along. The landings itself, we do anticipate seeing some development. I wonder if I, do I have that still? So we do anticipate seeing some development on the northwest corner of Spokane and Third Street, which I guess is right here, sorry. We, that was purchased last year and they have been going through the planning process and development process with my staff. I don't believe we have any plans that are currently ready to be shared, but they have shown what they will be doing, which is a two-story structure, being able to provide commercial and retail type of services on the ground floor. The two-acre parcel here has, is currently under contract and due diligence with the developer, as is the, or not developer, I'm sorry, with the owner, as is the remaining, I believe, 12, 13 acres. The remainder of the site is pretty much under contract and under due diligence and we do have meetings scheduled to begin those conversations again and find out where they're at and see if there's anything that, just kind of more or less get an update as to how this is progressing and trying, and hoping to be able to see some stuff happen over there this year. Again, this year, we're also doing the update to the city center master plan as we re-looked at that 2005 plan. This was briefed to you not too long ago. It's an addendum to the master plan and a lot of it really did come out with, you know what? The downtown is, pretty much reflects what it is that we, well, the same, the plan still reflects really what we want to see for a downtown. It just hasn't come to fruition yet. And, but we will begin to really see that as the landings and the mill begin to redevelop. We're gonna see those bookends help to take off and, you know, create this downtown that we've been hoping to see for, well, many years since 2005. We do have a number of additional projects that are pending within community development. This kind of just covers, you know, what we, what we're looking at, what we're seeing come through. Some of these are under plan review. Some of them are, have just come in for their initial pre-development type of meetings. I did update the lower right of there are, as of today, approximately 95 single-family houses currently awaiting their permit to be released. That was not included in those numbers from March. Couple of pieces to note here. We do have potential, after talking to the developer, there is a shopping center on the northeast corner of Highway 41 and Prairie that they do look to begin construction hopefully in 12 months, within the next 12 months. We've also been in conversations with the developer of the former Hunter's site and they have plans for a mixed-use development over there as well. In 2021, we do hope to see a couple of urban renewal districts adopted within the city. One over on the Pleasant View corridor and one again in the city center area where we have been doing the update to the addendum in the master plan. Some of the stuff that we also, again, hope to see, anticipate seeing, potentially some more of that missing middle type of housing. We did update the residential, or sorry, the zoning code in order to include kind of a residential mix zone. And as we're, as we're, as you were briefed a couple of weeks ago, or maybe last week, can't remember anymore. or maybe last week, can't remember anymore, the R-two zone, maybe, may be seeing modifications in order to help, help encourage these additional types of developments with the bungalow or the townhouses, multiplexes, maybe some live-work type of ideas. The residential mix zone really encourages some of that mixed housing types. We also updated the commercial mixed, the community commercial mix zone or created that new zone, allowing for a variety of commercial choices and potentially residential to be intermixed within those commercial areas as opposed to the old Euclidean-style zoning where you have your commercial separated from your residential, separated from your industrial and keeping them all separate. Today's development is kind of throwing it back to, closer to that traditional neighborhood development where you see an intermix of commercial nodes and pockets of residential amongst different types of uses. We will also hopefully look at the gradual, continued gradual implementation of the 2018 city center parking plan. As, as development comes online, they will be developing out this plan as it, as it were, you know, so that they are, because the developments are required to update their, the street frontages and bring them up to the planned specs. This is kind of the growth pays for growth type of idea again. So just a quick update on a couple of the Idaho Transportation Department projects as well. The Highway Forty-One corridor does continue their construction. I guess right now, the intersection of Hayden and Highway Forty-One is kind of a mess, so trying to avoid that intersection because they are continuing to work down north to south at this time. And the second bridge, I believe, is getting ready to be constructed as well. So they are, they are continuing their process and making their way down. In the next couple of years, we will also be likely to see construction begin in 2023 and 2024 for that I-90 Highway Forty-One interchange. Again, that'll tie into the Highway Forty-One project that they're currently working on just on the northern side of it. And in 2026, we do, they anticipate doing construction at the corner of, or the intersection of Highway Fifty-Three and Pleasant View. This would be, again, to install one of those raised spewies, I believe, is where they're at with that one, so that you've got, traffic can continue to flow on Highway Fifty-Three, and you can have safe exits and entrances coming out of that heavily-used intersection. Again, this was a kind of a headline that hit the paper not too long ago, River City is nobody's bedroom community anymore. We are growing, we are changing, we are evolving. There is a lot of good stuff that is happening within the city, and we see the benefits of that. And as we see the downtown begin to take off and, and interest continue to be, to spur this area, it just becomes more and more livable. Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Bob. Good information. Any questions, Bob?
Is this online?
It will be posted online after this meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it very much.
Good info. Is that the end of the workshop?
That is the workshop for tonight.
That was a lot of info in a half hour.
Yes, and he talks very fast. Just as a side note, we are no longer calling it Vista Park, Avista Park. We're calling it the Avista Project because that park will be named at some point, and so we're trying to not have it be pre-named. Just, that's just a side note. Dave and I made that decision yesterday, so.
We got to the public for a vote.
We can do all kinds of things. That decision hasn't been made on how the naming, we'll have to get with Avista to determine how that park will be named, whether it's something we put out to the public or if it's a committee or exactly how we would proceed with the naming of the park, but we've decided to call it the Avista Project just to, so it doesn't get the name associated ahead of time.
Okay. Bob, thanks again. Absolutely. That, I will adjourn the meeting, and we will reconvene in about twenty-eight minutes.